All right, it's a little bit after seven o'clock, it's time to start caucus. Bill is not here, but Mr. Limer might go talk about this a little bit, maybe the codified ordinance is update status. I saw you had emailed something about that.
Well, I think it was still in preliminary stages that we looked at it before. I wasn't ready to sign off for it, you know, sign off of getting anything from them, so I think we just postponed until we get our act together.
Okay.
Good. How much, how much is this?
I don't know.
It's a serious bill.
It is a serious amount, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe nine or 10,000.
Yeah. When we do the whole thing, the last time we redid the whole book was about $8,000.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah. That's a lot of money for a, 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 no. Raise your hand if anybody reads it, anybody looks at it.
You do?
Everybody looks at it.
I look at it.
But when I try to go to sleep at night.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
There's a lot of corrections in there though that need to be made.
Yes.
And before we pay for this again, I think those corrections need to be made, so we're not paying, you know.
Yeah, and you can get it on, on, uh, uh, email. It's all there. Oh, well.
It's only 10 grand with that.
We can't give Paula the ways, but we can express that.
We will. You're not kidding.
You want to talk about this?
Yes. This movement for setting the salary of the village zoning administrator is what we included in the budget that was passed at the last meeting, so this is just the housekeeping to get it done. It is being raised. You can see in section one, it shall be set at 7, 9166 per month, and this is effective for the month of March going forward, not January and February, because we did not pass that budget until March.
Now, will this be effective this meeting ahead of?
It will be effective, actually, it is going back, retroactive to March the first.
Anyone else have any caucus items they'd like to discuss?
There's nothing else on the caucus? Okay, um, just on the streets, well, police, I should say, um, Russ, should be on everyone's report, uh, Russ is requesting to carry over his unused vacation time, and so is Officer Coney, so I will make a motion later.
What's Russ had left in hand yet?
He said two and a half weeks. Yeah, weeks. Couldn't give me an exact amount, does that matter?
No.
Does it matter?
And how much, well, it could matter for budgets, definitely, for carrying over, how much time for Coney?
He doesn't know, he just, they just want to carry it.
Says, uh, nine days on his, here, for Coney.
Coney's nine days, Russ said he thought two and a half weeks.
Nick, you're gonna have to take a look at those.
Yeah, look, look at Russ.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
He should be going for a year.
Yeah. Want to talk to Russ?
No. Okay. He couldn't give me an exact amount.
Okay.
Okay. But there's no problem with Coney's and the nine days. Is there a problem with that?
Well, that's all, that's the same line item. So, how are we in here with the office staff now that these guys are coming in for training? What's going on with that?
Well, she said that you authorized like an extra day of.
Not all, not every week, but just another day or so, speaking. Is that okay, sir?
Well, we see how it is at the end of the year, I mean, it depends on like how much sick leave she uses, then we have to pay her for sick leave, and then when she's off sick, we have to have someone else here.
Yep.
So, you know, it's, it's AI, it's just sort of, you have to watch us.
Yes. You got some?
I'd like to suggest, Tim, since, um, her complaint was that there's too much work, then actually what we should be thinking about, if that's the case, that it's too much work with the changeover and the way it's being charged, I'm, I'm not sure that'll be the case once she starts to make, be more comfortable with it.
Too much work with the new pay system?
Well, what else, what else has changed that she's saying there's too much work?
Well, well, the impound is new, and then, well, the credit card system, that makes things easier.
Well, that's what I thought. Okay, but if that's the situation, that she feels that it's too much work, then we should be thinking about maybe using these part-time people who are being trained, maybe four hours a week. Train one the first week, train the other one the second week, they'll get in a little bit of time. This way, that helps her to get the work done, if the work is a problem. Do you don't feel that it is a problem?
I don't know, I mean, I, I, you know, when we sat down and talked about the new credit card issue, and I said, Paula, that's gonna make your life in this office easier, because you're not gonna have the traffic coming in. Everyone's gonna do it online.
Yeah. Is it just that maybe she's not proficient at it yet?
Right, just, I think she's just overwhelmed.
Yeah.
Well, she seems to be getting better, she's done, she, she does it at the end of the day, like she'll get the information, she'll put all her stuff down, and she'll get a number, if something doesn't work, she'll run it four o'clock, and then send her a receipt or whatever, but she, she does a couple a day, and it seems to be working pretty good so far.
Okay. Is she still back to 35 hours a week?
No.
She's back to 40? Okay.
She backed up, she worked three fourths of an hour on overtime last week. She just had to get out of here on time.
Okay. Well, I mean, there was some talk about a pay raise, because she feels that there's too much work, but paying her more money isn't going to make the work any different. I would say then if that's the issue, that we need to have somebody else picking up some hours.
Yeah.
But just something to think about, because, I mean, I don't see where a pay raise helps that kind of a situation.
Hey, look, all we gotta do is talk to the lady. Get her, who, who, Tim, that's, that's your job, right?
Chris has done that.
I've talked to her, we, we.
Yeah, I have too.
Yeah.
And, okay, but let's find out, make a list, buh, 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 you know, let's find out, instead of just, you know, bumping around here.
Right. Nick, can that line item support four hours a week?
Well, like I said, it depends on how much sick leave she uses, because then when she's on sick leave, we have to have someone here.
Right, right.
So, um, we factored in her, I think she gets like three weeks of vacation, but you just don't know how much she's gonna use in the way of sick leave.
I think they're both pretty close, I mean, they've been here a couple times already. I mean, it seems like, she said when they come in, the phone, phone traffic isn't heavy, and that's what she wants them to do, to get on the phones, and sometimes it's, you can't tell when it's gonna be crazy or not crazy. But they, they both seem to know what they're doing.
Are you good? Are you proposing, like, bring in one of the substitutes four hours a week?
Right, and the reason I'm saying is, because of that conversation at the last meeting, where it was said that she, she wants a pay increase because she feels that she's doing more work, but getting a pay increase doesn't resolve.
Gets the work done.
Right, that won't get the work done. Bringing somebody in, some more hours, who's trained, would get the work done, so I'm, I'm just really confused about what.
Right, and if they only use them four hours a week, that's only $50 a week.
Right.
So, if she needs help, maybe we should be helping her out like that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, maybe Mondays would be the best, because that's when all the stuff on the weekend's on her desk, she has to put all the tickets in the system and everything else.
Then maybe she wouldn't be so overwhelmed, right?
Yeah. Okay.
I'll, I'll see what she wants to do.
I don't think that should be a choice, honestly, that she doesn't get to choose a, a raise.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying that, but I'm talking about when she wants help, when she needs it most, or Monday morning's the worst, or Wednesday afternoon, or what's the worst day, and why haven't come in that day.
Oh, to have some extra help.
Right, so you could tell on the set, okay, Cheryl, you're coming in Mondays from nine to noon.
Switching to real life, and then every other week.
Right.
And that will be here.
And it resolves the problem.
And it gives exposure.
Right.
If that's what the problem is, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I know Russ was saying, um, just with the new impound fees, that it's generating.
Yeah.
Well, it is several new things all at one time, but, um.
The impound fees, where do they go to? The court?
They go in through the court, and then they get transferred here to the village.
General fund?
Yep.
So, will something like that help pay for a four-hour person, extra person?
Sure.
Okay.
I sent out two that are both able, and that's gonna help us. All right, anyone else have any caucus items?
Yeah, I have, um, out of Western Reserve Fire District, I'll just report real quick, um, that our, um, our truck is back, and, and the truck that was in repair shop was, was our ladder truck, and the ladder truck, the hose inside deteriorated because of our water, and, um, it was all rested out, so it was about 10,000, Joe, to fix?
Yeah.
Just about 10,000, they had to repeat, take piece after piece after piece.
Just for the.
Yeah, so, the, the truck is, um, a 91, so with the capital improvement levy, the permanent one that they had put on a few years ago, the new building out on 170 will be paid off within two years, so then the next, um, money that they're gonna use on is to get a new truck at our station, and a new truck like that, you're talking 750,000, yeah, so just to let you know where that was at. And that, that was about it, and everything else is running great. Anything else from?
We gotta find out. We, we don't need a ladder truck to go up 10 stories, you know?
Right.
This is a, this is a huge truck that we got now. Maybe we can downsize it a little bit.
Do you have any other?
Uh, yes, I, I'll be asking for an executive session on pending litigation.
That sounds good. Yeah, that's all I could say. Anthony, you have any?
Um, you know, I just got this in my box, and I don't know if you remember last year signing.
Is that the aggregation stuff?
Yeah, do you remember signing that?
I think so. I had Paula put in your box to look at it.
The only thing that I can tell is you are designated as the, um, signing entity, and that you're verifying by signing this, that the annual report is accurate, so I want to make sure the annual report's accurate, as if I would know. Um, but it seems like the only thing you're verifying is that you're the contact information, you're the fiscal contact information, and that's all you're verifying. If that's it, then I think you can verify that. If it's anything more about our compliance, or, you know, this is Independent Energy Consultants, I don't know what they're doing. Are they our, are they our agent, is that what it is?
What's that, that aggregate?
Yes.
For gas?
Yes.
Gas, and electric.
They're our agent, then, correct. So, so I believe that since you're designated as the assigned entity, that you can, you can sign off on it.
That only means that people that can get in are, are home, right?
I think what this means is that what, what, um, iOS is reporting to them, is the annual report, and, and they're verifying through Tim's signature, that the report is accurate to the test of his knowledge. So, I don't think it requires him to, to know the ins and outs.
Does it give a value for, for, um, how many thousand, 20,000?
Doesn't, all, all it does.
We gotta know that, we gotta know that, Tim.
Yeah, we know it is for, you know, 459, 432, something like that, I'll find out. Oh, okay. But we already know that, it's already set. For two, it's, it's set for last year, starting November.
All he's doing, Joe, is verifying the contact information.
Yeah, oh, that's all. The only thing, now you say that, Mr. Major, the only thing that I did catch now is where it does have earnings, is they're filled in with zeros, and it says that the information is used for PUCO, the, the state agency. For purposes of assessing, reporting company shall report its interest rate, gross earnings for the provision of retail sales, for which it is subject to certification by PUCO, and it, it does have zeros here, so I don't know if that matters. You might want to call them and just say, why are there zeros here, what does that mean? And if you're satisfied, then I'm okay with it. Other than that, you know, you're attesting to what you know, your address, your phone number.
Okay. They'll send me a quarterly report, like a little attachment on email, it shows how many people, like from the beginning to now, are signed up, and it shows what the cumulative savings are.
Oh.
I'll print it off sometime and bring it in.
Oh, good, yes, good.
Call mark, can you just say, Anthony's had a question about why are there zeros for earnings, that I want to certify something that's not necessarily accurate. Um, the only thing I had is, is Mr. Lewis here? Mr. Lewis? Okay. I did get a call from, um, Mr. Lewis, who owned the bank building, who owns the bank building, and that's why I waited last time to talk about it, because I gave him the chance to come if he wanted to speak.
Going by Yules?
Yeah, yeah, he had a question as to why it was assessed on his taxes, um, this past March, and, um, you know, there's a lengthy history as to how we got to that point. He expressed surprise that he didn't know that we were gonna go ahead and follow through and take the, the money. I said, I'm quite certain that, that your lawyer knew, I wouldn't have done that, you know, without telling you that. I found my email that, that states that. I'm not only getting lawyers, I'm not here to do that, I just wanted him to know that I, I went through all the procedures. I explained to him about both properties, the Yules and his property, and I talked to Dave about this. His timeline was a little bit off, he thought that the damage was done to the property because of, um, the utilities. Ohio Edison, I think, he thought it backed into the pole, and that's what damaged it. And I reminded him, or explained to him, it was my understanding that the tree fell long before that happened, the tree fell on a car, part of the tree fell on a car, and I remember handling that for the village, getting the guy his car paid. That happened, and then they backed into the, the pole, and all the damage ensued. So, his, his, his frustration was that he thought Ohio Edison was gonna pay for the damage, uh, because of the trees, and I said, council's position, and my position was, we were on notice of the damage being done by the tree of a car, we could not wait to find out what was gonna happen, and we didn't know that Ohio Edison said they were gonna do anything, that's why we went forward, as is our right. So, once I explained that part of it to him, he, he said that he thought that maybe Dave had said that the village would cover it, and I know Dave would not say that. I said, I would talk to Dave and verify it, to make sure I wasn't wrong, but it would be remiss if Dave would do that, and I doubt he did. Talked to Dave, he didn't say that. I also remembered that when I talked to his lawyer while this was going on, at one point, I think Aqua Ohio was gonna fix it, they were gonna pay for the damage to the tree, and it was all done. So, I called Aqua Ohio to make arrangements to get the money, and then they said they weren't paying for anything. So, he made me confused about what he thought maybe Ohio Edison might do.
How much were you talking about?
It was, uh, 800 bucks, 850, I think.
For crying out loud.
So, what I told him was that.
But what do you think, you know?
I told him that he could come to council any, any Tuesday, first and third, and then address council if he wished about his concerns, that I would bring it up, and let council know what he felt. I didn't think there would be any remediation for him, but I said I would bring it up and let council know, you know, where, where he stood. So, the fact that he didn't come, I haven't called him back, but actually dealing with another issue, which I'll, I'll talk about in a little bit. So, I'm just letting council know that, you know, I did receive a call, I did talk to him, and, um, and that's where that stood. The other issue, that's why I brought this today, I mean, this is the best I've sounded in a week. The other issue is, we had someone apply for, um, solicitation in the village. They had actually come here and asked, I, I didn't remember this until I talked to the gentleman tonight, they wanted to do one day solicitation, and the mayor has in his, in his discretion to deny it, and he did. So, the gentleman, they're from Edward Jones, now, full disclosure, four years ago, or five years ago, my cousin, Val D'Apulita, who works for Edward Jones, and Boardman came, introduced a couple people that just got their licenses, and they wanted to go meet people. Council's gonna entertain that, we never, they never replied, you never had to act on it, I don't think. Usually council and the mayor do not allow for door-to-door solicitation, that's been the longstanding, you know, stance of the village. So, when the mayor declined, gentleman who is the supervisor called me today and said, works for Edward Jones, he's in charge, they wanted to just come out one day, not do, not do solicitation, just to introduce themselves, they wanted to open an office here, Poland, and this was a way of introducing themselves to the people of the village. Why did the mayor, um, deny the application? I said, well, I didn't talk to him about it, I don't know for sure if his discretion to do so. I said, but I think, well, I'm speculating, but we've always denied, we don't want door-to-door, you know, going around. Um, I said, you do have the right, he does have the right to come here and, you know, have a hearing with council, within 14 days, which I said would be a problem, but he has a right to appeal, and the council has a right to make the determination. He wanted me to express to council, to the mayor, that they're not, they want to do it one time and one time only, it's not that they're gonna be doing it on a regular basis, but could they get a, a review of your decision, for you to consider letting them do it one time, as a way for them to perhaps come in the village as a business entity, that they generated maybe 700,000 in sales last year, and 1% of that in the village would be, you know, 7,000 in, in tax revenue. He said he wanted to be a part of that conversation with us. So, I said I would present that to council, to the mayor, and let him consider whether or not he wanted to do that.
What is the business?
Quickly, and, um.
Investments?
Investments.
Okay. And I, I don't know, like, I have nothing against them, but just like you said, the president in the past, we never, never did that, so.
And I told him, um, so, you let me know what you want to do, and then I'll tell him.
Oh, okay. He wants to come in? Everyone's okay with him, doesn't bother him?
It works, one day.
I think he's not gonna get, he's not gonna get it.
No.
Well, I gotta have to think about that. I mean, people don't like people walking out of their doors, period.
Right.
I think that says it all.
Right, so he's more welcome coming to talk to us, but we're not coming to talk to him.
Why don't they just, like, rent the library, have a meet and greet thing on their own, you know?
Or send out, call, make telephone calls, and set up appointments.
Yeah.
Here's what I would propose, rather than put it all on the mayor's shoulders, I would either invite them to have something in the village, where they invite people to come, where they can come to the next, um, council session, and then present it to council in general, then you guys can decide as a collective.
I could give them a voice, right?
And they can express better than I can, and not their coun, on your council, not theirs. Would that be an idea?
You may want to tip your hand, indicating it's worth him not coming.
Without tipping my hand, I will try to do that.
Yeah, past experience, um, our residents have not wanted people selling, and that basically they're selling their product. We're fine with the nonprofits, you know, kids come to the door looking for a band, or football, or whoever, we're fine with that, that's not for profit, that's, you know, for our school kids, and those kinds of things, but for, for profit, private businesses, knocking on your store.
But like I said, I, I would ra, I mean, personally or professionally, I'd rather be a collective, because, you know, he focused on, he had our code section, where he said it's the mayor's discretion to investigate, but he has to have a reason, and I said, well, you know, I'm speculating, but I think the reason is precedent that we just don't do that, um, that's not really a reason, you know, that's just precedent.
Well, it's safety, in a way, strangers coming to your door. I mean, our house is sort of at the end of the village, we get a lot of people coming by, and I chase them off, because, you know, they don't have a permit.
I did look at our code, and our code does say that you have to look at, like, five different factors of the person who applies, and you've gotta go through their record, and you've gotta go through background, all these different things, and it puts a lot of impetus on the mayor to do that, and, you know, rather than him having to make that call, like I said, I think if they came here and they spoke to you guys, and then you let it know after thinking about it for a day or two, might be a, a way to handle it.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Didn't somebody mention, have a.
At something else?
At, at the library.
I'll recommend that to him first.
Yeah. People that are interested, they'd come, yeah.
That's a great way to do it, Joe.
Yeah, I'll recommend that first. And then I'm done with my report, if I actually.
It's actually, actually good. Glad you got here, set it up, thank you. Anyone else have any caucus items in the last couple minutes here? No? Do you have any?
I don't know if anybody, um, noticed, is it Ben K here tonight? No. Okay, um, Jordan put in an article in, I don't know if you noticed, about our budget, but if you happen to notice, there was an error here, it was a substantial error, just of, uh, $86,320 for council member salaries and benefits. So, you can imagine when I saw that. Anyway, she did put a correction in, uh, that number should have been 33,320 dollars.
Something when I wasn't around.
She, uh, yeah, she pulled a couple of line items.
You took a little bit mean, didn't you, Russ?
Anyway, she did correct it.
Hey, Russ, how, how many, um, hours do you have that you want to carry over? That was a question.
I've got two weeks and a couple days. 96 hours, I believe, or something, I'm not sure, it's more than two weeks.
He just needs to check, um, and how about my.
Lights yawn.
Just to see.
Nine days, yeah.
To be sure that those items that we already said in the budget can cover the additional.
Could have used.
Is nine days, can you spread police and streets, I assume, or not?
No.
That would just be all police?
All police. So, if I make the motion, it's just upon?
It's just an extension, we're not asking to be paid for or anything.
Yeah.
Okay. Extended until when?
Yeah, well, I think your order says it's only able to be extended for like 90 days. So, in the next three months, you have to use that.
For then, I think before we've gone, you got then another extension because of our work, the work that's going on in the street and the police, okay.
And that's, I mean, that's the thing, we're just busy, that's all.
All right, 7:30, please stay up for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic whose stand is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of members. Mr. Cassette?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mr. Major?
Here.
Mrs. Cernick?
Here.
Mrs. Yash?
Here.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Donovan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose. Okay, acceptance of the minutes from the previous council meeting.
I make the motion that we waive the reading and accept this reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose. Notification of means and events to the public and news media, bleefer. That's Bill, right? Bill's on bleefer, I don't know who's on Bill. One, one's bleefer usually, 6:30.
6:30, second meeting of the month.
Finances?
Uh, finance will hold a meeting on April the 6th at 6:30, um, and we will be looking at insurance.
Legislation?
Nothing scheduled.
Police?
Uh, not, nothing until, so what's our meeting next?
April 7th.
April 7th, at, at 6:30, and I will be absent from that meeting.
Streets?
We just had our meeting this evening, uh, it's the second council meeting of the month at 6:30.
Uh, boards, ARB?
First Thursday of the month, 7:00 PM, Village Hall.
Planning?
They will be meeting tomorrow, 7:00 PM, Village Hall.
Uh, board of zoning appeals, nothing scheduled. Western Reserve Fire District?
Our next meeting will be held on Wednesday, April eighth, at seven-thirty.
Forest Board?
The next meeting is, we had a meeting on April eighteenth. That's always a fourth Tuesday, yeah, at eight-thirty. Oh, wait, eight, what?
Seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty, twenty-four, three, yeah. And High Memorial. Bill's got that now. Okay. Dave Smith is now the chairman, and we got a request from Beth Queen to make a presentation with the children. I'll read this. Thursday, March nineteenth, at three PM, at the Village Hall. Special program presentation, Beth Queen and Poland High School students, research on Poland's trees and plants as a historical perspective. And that was requested, or approved by Chairman Dave Smith. Is that okay with everybody?
And I'll be here?
Here, yeah, here, yeah. All right? Yeah, go ahead, that's all, okay.
Report for mayor, don't really have anything other than that the February violations bureau account has been balanced, and like we talked about earlier, she's starting to get into the credit card stuff more, so that's gonna only help us, I think, if we collect anything in the future.
Motion to accept the mayor's report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Report from fiscal officer?
Okay, I'm circling around the list of bills to be paid, and in addition, the February bank reconciliation, the account has been reconciled, your signatures, February numbers are in front of you, and there's an error on my sheet I just passed out, I'm showing seventeen percent, but the numbers on the February expenditure are only on the clipping off, temporary appropriation, not the one that was passed on the third of March, so this is your information. We have received the third and fourth advance from the county auditor, the first was fifty-four thousand dollars and the second is thirty-six thousand dollars. The account at Chase is officially shut down, and that money is now in Farmer's Bank. The STAR will be, excuse me, the STAR will be reimbursed, the six hundred thousand within the next week, you know, mayor and I have to go and sign, since it's now required that we have a second signature on that. And we'll be right back where we were, but, excuse me, when this whole thing started. Enter report.
Nick, is this a new approach that Chase has, these canceled checks?
Yeah, that's been in there all along, Joe.
Oh, it has?
Yeah, but you're not...
But now we're all finished with that.
Oh, okay.
So we're now the farmers.
You want to take a look at that?
Fine. Enter report.
Motion to accept next report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? And from a deputy clerk?
Nope.
Report from zoning administrator?
I'm working with Gary Diorio on getting our MS four certification from the Ohio EPA.
What is an MS four?
Now, it has to do with stormwater runoff.
Does that require permits?
It does. There's a permit through Ohio EPA.
Do you know how much that's gonna cost?
It's gonna cost us two hundred dollars. I've already talked to Nick at the last meeting about issuing, getting us a permit for that.
Motion to accept the zoning report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? You want to give your report? I'll get Russ. Should we probably accept the, I guess? Would you give him caucus? Or not?
Motion to accept that.
I make a motion to accept the written report for the police and streets.
Second.
Report department's committed writing.
I guess everything's straightforward, Joe.
Yeah, we're, do what we can do. We'll get caught up. All in favor of Russ's report?
Yeah.
All right, can you oppose? Anthony, you want us to accept, do you wanna?
Oh, yeah, um, previously submitted in caucus.
Motion to accept solicitor's report as presented in caucus?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Report from engineer. Dr. Dave Davis taking care of that, right? I have no, no contact. All right, reports from outstanding committees of council, finance, wage, audit, and insurance.
Okay, so finance, I think most of you already know that we have talked about the possibility of putting on a two-mill levy for streets in the primary, however, we did not make the deadline to do that. So we are actually, and really, we wanted to do a little more homework on it too, to be sure that we have something good in store to show our taxpayers. So we are recommending that that be done at the fall, coming out of finance, a recommendation for a two-mill street levy that would be put on in the fall, and the deadline for filing that now is going to be August the fifth. So we'll need three readings to do that, 'cause you don't do this by emergency, and that's something to think about during vacation times, we need to be on, is first of all, we need to all be on board with this. And I'm assuming that everybody is in favor of doing this, because we really need help with these streets. How do you feel about that, Joe?
Yeah, we sure need, hell, one, two mill?
Two mill's gonna bring in approximately a hundred and fifteen thousand, okay? 'Cause each mill is about fifty-seven thousand. And as you recall, the paving that we did in thirteen, 'cause we didn't pave last year, we paved the year before that, it was a little under a mile for almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Nick had a conversation with Gary when he went over with the contract, the MS engineering contract for the year, the annual. They're able to put together something for us so that we can have a lot more facts. He did know that we have eleven point six one total miles to cover.
My counting, Route one seventy to twenty-four, six sixteen.
Right, 'cause we don't have to worry about those, okay? So he said the going rate right now is about a hundred fifty thousand dollars a mile. Yeah.
To pay, to repay.
Oh, you should be fifty.
Right, now, those would be the ones that probably need grinding, the whole deal, so maybe some of it will be a little, maybe some of it won't be grinding, I don't know. It's been a long time that these roads have been, you know, we keep filling and patching, and last year we spent eight thousand dollars on hot patch, but, you know, it comes back up, there's no way around it. So we think that it's important that we try to do something to fix these roads. We obviously don't have that kind of revenue coming into our street fund, and the STAR account, that's how we paid for it the last time. However, the STAR account, I don't like rainy day fund notations, but actually, I think of it more as an emergency fund. Look what happened in Youngstown last year, they had a sinkhole, was it, that opened up?
Yes.
Three hundred thousand dollars. They weren't prepared for it. That is all the money that we have to cover any emergency that comes up. So if we were to take a hundred thousand dollars every year like we did in thirteen and start doing roads, in nine years' time, we wouldn't even be done with the roads, and the money would be gone.
Okay, where did you come up with the two mill? Who, who come up with that?
Well, one mill really isn't gonna do much of anything, fifty-seven thousand dollars.
No, right.
So with two mills, we have some potential here to work with, you know?
Like tonight, we, we said, we do it sections, right? You know, bad section, like that.
Right, and definitely you should do the worst.
That's all we do.
That's, that's just a, you mean as far as just doing patching, Joe? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Repaving and such.
Michael, not in mile runs, but maybe a hundred yards or what you're...
On Russ's report, he listed, like, doing some bad intersections.
Benlow, College, Riverside, Island, Botford, and parts of the manor.
And were you gonna recommend that that money be taken out of the STAR account? Is that what you were gonna?
We haven't gotten to that point yet.
You haven't gotten to the money point yet?
No.
I mean, 'cause you know, that's, that's where we have the problem.
As, as Russ starts to repair, he's gonna advise the streets on whether it's flatlined, dead streets that we have to do paving or with patches, so...
So here's the other thing. There's money out there, there's grant money. If we could pass this levy, we could submit for grants through Gary, okay? The engineering would be covered under our annual contract that we do with MS consultants. We, there's some grants out there right now, there are eighty-twenty and sixty-forty. You know, if we could get some of that money, along with our levy money, we could really do something with our roads.
Oh, yeah. But we've been unsuccessful with, with that approach, you know? They look at us with a jaundiced eye, I don't know. We can try it. Eighty-twenty would be nice, huh? Yeah.
So if you're, you know, you wanna kind of think about this a while and toss it around, talk about it with the streets? I'd like to see it go to streets. I mean, finance is happy to do our part in this. I can't honestly say I know as much about roads as you do, so I would feel a lot more comfortable, streets would get involved in this and try to give us a perspective on the best way to go about it.
Okay, maybe we get Gary and Jerry and we have a discussion, huh?
I'm sure he'd be happy to meet.
Oh, no doubt.
Yeah.
All we need is money!
That's the whole problem.
Yeah.
And, you know, I mean, two mills is not a ton of money, but it would certainly help us to get this underway and to get it taken care of. It's gonna take some time, and we may have to reach into that STAR account for some help as we go, you know?
How much do we have in that STAR?
About nine, nine hundred seventeen thousand?
Nine seventeen, nine seventeen.
Okay. That's not to say we couldn't have a sinkhole here, because, you know, that nightmare has popped up in many communities.
The thing that you have to remember about STAR is, when it's gone, it's gone.
Yeah.
We don't get that anymore.
Yeah.
So the estate thing has been...
That was great, we were saying eighty thousand bucks a year.
That's how we did a lot of our payments.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, as an emergency, we could always sell bonds if we had to. I mean, we have a pretty good track right there. You could, uh...
Go for debt.
You could do that, you can go for debt, you can do, you know, let's see, tax anticipation bonds, with the...
Oh, you don't want to do tax anticipation.
Based on your real estate taxes, but then that means that you're getting in less money. So then you have to start reducing services on that end, so it's a very slow, slow...
That's what we live on, that tax money.
Yeah, but streets, streets are a little bit, yeah. Would Gary be familiar with these grants that you're letting send to the...
Yes, he's very familiar with that.
He's actually doing one for his senior brother.
Oh, he is? Okay. I'll get ahold of Gary.
Yeah, they just passed their street levy.
In fact, he's the one that gave them all of the facts in order to get it out there.
Okay.
So, and he said that that cost to us would be about two thousand dollars, and we'd be able to use that against our three-five-hundred dollars that we have.
For him to generate all the information that we need.
All the recourse that we need, so...
Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Miss Farn. I'll give Gary a call.
But let's get a meeting, so that, you know...
Yeah.
Okay, so keep us posted on the finance, because if we need to do that filing, like I said, August fifth, and we need three readings on ordinance. The only other option is we keep patching roads, which we have to do, obviously, we have to do that.
Maybe the citizens would be more agreeable now, because the roads are really terrible.
They are.
Last time, they turned it down, though.
Last two times.
Yeah, yeah. I, I forget, what millage did we ask for last time?
Think about the same, wasn't it?
I thought it was...
I don't have a record yet, okay.
I mean, it's really hard. It is, it's really hard, because everybody is asking for, after you have estate taking all our revenue away, they feel we should pass our own levies individually. Well, how many levies can each little entity put on and still give the kind of services we were giving before? It's pretty frustrating.
Yeah. Finance? Motion to accept the finance report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Legislation and policy?
Nothing.
Police and fire?
Nothing.
Street, sidewalks, and drainage?
Up here in this little box is a list of all the street signs that are gonna be replaced as part of that grant, so anyone wants to flip that, copy of it?
Thank you, David. I'll have to make myself useful.
Yeah, not too hard. Blooper? That's Bill, for you guys, right? Anything going on, blooper?
Nothing much going on, I know.
Report from boards, playing commission? We haven't met since last meeting, but tomorrow's our next meeting. Board of zoning appeals?
Nothing.
Architecture reboard? Nothing at this time. Forest Board?
Ellen Othetic has given a speech tonight to the Historical Society about the early days in the woods, and I talked to her, I, I think at our next meeting, I'm gonna invite my key here from, you know, the...
Republic Services.
Republic, yeah, because, you know, the weather's getting better now, and we need some help down there in the woods on the paths and stuff like that, and he's gonna be retiring in June, so I think we'd better utilize him as best we can.
Joe, did he say anything to you about the five thousand dollars that we're supposedly supposed to get from BFI? Whatever the current name is.
No, starting this year, I just don't know when it's gonna come.
So we don't have the idea?
Oh, what, what was that for?
For the, he's gonna give us five thousand dollars a year for the woods. When they negotiate, the township did their re-up thing, for the next twenty-five years or whatever, we're gonna get five thousand dollars a year, starting this year.
Boy, I hope we can do that. Remember, we, we had, for, for the leaf machine, remember? And, and they, all of a sudden, you didn't have any money, so we were out of luck. They were giving us three thousand dollars a year for that leaf machine, remember?
Oh, no, that was...
That was a green team.
That was a green team.
That was a green team.
Yeah, well, I'm using it as a, as a reference, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, my, my organization, company, or whatever they are, they never gave us any money before. All those tipping fees went to the township, but we got the same trucks on our roadways, tearing everything up. But he mentioned that to me when I went out for the ODOT grant meeting.
Oh, yeah.
And he came up to me after the meeting, and he said, we're going to give the village five thousand dollars for forest and parks. So has he told you that already?
No, he, I, I want to...
I, I know about that.
We negotiated with the health department.
Do you have that in writing someplace?
Uh, Joanne Waller does. I, I might have it somewhere, but she does. She was there, I was there. Yeah, it's gonna happen, next, till twenty thirty-five or something like that, that's a pretty long time.
That's great.
Yeah, it is great. Show me the money.
Yeah, so, who asked him?
Look, I didn't know about that. Did you know about that?
I did not.
Yeah, what, what meeting was that?
Last year, they went, they renegotiated their deal with the health, health, county health service, or Pat Sweney was there, and Mike Hager, and me and Joanne Waller, and we asked him, well, they asked him on our behalf, the township did, and he said, yeah, he'll give us five thousand dollars.
Very good.
Yep.
Hot dog.
Yeah. Every bit helps.
You gotta keep us informed.
And that's strictly going to the forest?
For the woods, yes.
Okay, for the woods, Joe.
Oh, good. Because they were getting maybe a thousand dollars a year recently.
Not even that.
Five hundred last year, yeah.
Okay.
The forest?
That's Forest Board, yeah. Motion to accept the Forest Board report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? High Memorial?
Nothing.
And then Western Reserve Fire District?
Nothing.
Reports from special committees? Communication from residents? Nothing to say? Okay, that's fair. All right, any new business? Any old business? Motion to ordinances and resolutions? Motion, ordinances, and resolutions?
I have two motions out of our Polon Village Police. I'd like to make a motion for the request from Chief Russ Beatty to carry over his unused vacation time. Nick will look into the exact amount of hours, but it's somewhere around ninety-six hours.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I would also make a motion to request for Michael Conan for an extension on his nine days of vacation time to roll over until this year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other motions, ordinances, and resolutions?
I have a motion to waive the three readings to pass by emergency and ordinance setting salary for the zoning administrator.
Second.
Rule call? Mr. Cassette?
Yes.
Terry Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernick?
Yes. Want to make a motion to move this as an ordinance setting salary of the Village zoning administrator effective retroactive to March the first, two thousand fifteen, and declaring it emergency.
Second.
Rule call? Mr. Cassette?
Yes.
Terry Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernick?
Yes.
All right, any other motions, ordinances, or resolutions? Second and third readings. Presentation of the bills.
Make a motion if the bills can pay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Questions from the news media?
JT?
Nothing.
This one's quiet.
Yeah.
Very, very quiet, thank God. Remarks by council, Mr. Cassette? Good luck tomorrow, dogs, great season. Mr. Major?
I got a question. On your report, what's advance three and four receive from the county auditor? Fifty-four grand and thirty-six.
For first half real estate taxes. They will send you out X number of dollars as they get them in. That's an advance. Our total.
How's that work?
Well, as you send in your taxes, if you send them in the first week, then that's sitting down there. So then he will send that out.
Oh.
That's not extra, Joe, that's part of the, the revenue that we expect on tax.
This is not extra money.
It's not extra, unfortunately.
So you can't have a party, Joe.
No party.
Okay, goodness. Thank you, Joe.
Mrs. Cernick?
Just good luck to the dogs.
Terry Limer?
Happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody.
Good luck to the Polon basketball team for the first.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for litigation.
Second.
Rule call? Mr. Cassette?
Yes.
Terry Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernick?
Yes.
Do you want to, Joe?